Hello. Hi.
Hey, give me a second, I'm gonna go on the other room. Alright, so we chill. Alright, so you can get up over there, one. Surprised anyone showed up.
I know, I just saw the message and I just got out of the shower not that long ago, so. Getting myself together, I was like, I gotta sit, I gotta take a break for a minute, cuz. I'm there, but I'm pretty sure my purchase icon or something is supposed to be on the right side. And I just can't figure that part out.
Um, if it wasn't for Max and. Doug, like. I wouldn't have any of it done, none of it. And like they didn't, um, Doug was really good, he. Like went over the whole JS with me and made me. Like go over all of it and understand what I was doing before he even started letting me work on. The thing, okay, cool. Um. How much of it do you have done? Did you get the API call done?
Yeah, I can share my screen, let me, let me show you what I have so far. Okay, so, alright, I have the books in there, well, keep, alright, so I have my. JavaScript over here, the HTML, the CSS, um, this is what I have so far, the books are, are there. Um, I just spent so much time on things that were like. Like I had one book that was coming in like really, really big and I don't know why it like was filling up. Like this whole section, so it took me, then I was trying to use, I was going through a video and looking at the slides and trying to figure out. Um, how to filter my postman? And so I'm like, oh, you know, how do I filter, you know, my postman, I'm doing all this stuff, trying to figure out how to filter the postman. And then I'm like, okay, I can just use the search icon, like I, to search for the book, cuz then I was gonna like create. A div and try to like single it out through CSS, um. So anyway, I didn't end up having to do that, I just went and tagged in the book images to kind of shrink them down or whatever. But now I'm pretty sure I'm supposed to have something over here to click on, like none of these are like clickable.
So did you do any, did you do any flex on your HTML?
Did I know?
I think that's the only thing, I think that's the only thing that like saved my whole entire thing was, um, flex. In the section, I did, um. In the section that like holds literally everything. I put, um.
So like in my main div, cuz I have the main div with. The container.
I did it right after, um. So I did div class container and then I did section and everything else is in that section. But I threw tags on that section, I did class, um, D flex text center, flex column, justify content center. Align item center and I literally, cuz the only way I can do this is to go through all of my old stuff. And figure out like, oh, I did this over here and this is how I want the new project to look. So I'm gonna take this little snippet of code from over here and throw it in there and it worked, um. Let me see, see, yeah, you have the container fluid on there.
I do, I did the header, this is where I put the image at, up here.
So I did, um.
Title. Go ahead.
So for like the, um. I did a whole bunch here, let me see if I can throw it in the chat so you can like. That's everything that I put on my section that holds the whole entire thing.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
But is that gonna bring up the, 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 do you have a purchase over here?
So the.
I know.
The, yeah, the purchase part had to go into the JavaScript. Let me see your JavaScript. Um. Title.
Maybe that's why, cuz I have.
You had to do.
Book images.
Yep, you had to pull out another. URL, um, so like if you do the, uh. When we first got into the whole API, there was, it, it gave us like all of the information we needed. And we had to like dig through it and go, oh, I want this book, or I want this, or I want that. Cuz I li- like literally only did one section of books, I did like graphic manga books, um.
Oh, see, I looked at the whole, um.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's right, like you're, you're done with that, you got that part in it. Where you did your, um, your lists, like I just narrowed it down to, I did. Dot notation and I narrowed it down to, um. Get the book by book dot. Book image and then get the title by book dot title and then get the book. Or the author by book dot author and then in order to do. Like a purchase link.
Okay, wait, slow down, slow down, wait, okay, so I have the book that title here.
Yep.
Have the book that author.
Yep.
The image, so I need another one, that's what you're saying.
I would, I would just add another one on there.
Okay.
And then you have to, um. You have to target it by, see, I didn't know how, I only did one of them, like I did. Book dot by slash or by underscore links and then I narrowed it down to like the first one, which was zero. And then I did it by the URL.
Okay, alright, so I need to.
Because like you have the image URL.
Mm-hmm.
You just have to do the same thing for.
I have the image URL.
Here, um, inspect your page. And open up the console. So go into object. And then go to results. And go to lists. And now drop down even let's say the first one. I think the, like the hard part of this one. Um, dropdown book. See, yeah, the hard part about this one is. It's not gonna be the same URL for all of them. So you couldn't narrow it down, I don't know how to narrow it down for all of them, it would like. I only know, knew how to arrow it down, narrow it down for. One book section, do you know what I mean, like for the mangas? But I mean, it should be the same for all of them.
To get the purchase price in there?
Yeah, to get like the, because I have where I can just push Amazon and it brings me to the Amazon page that. To purchase it, but like we both did. So yours is, I mean, it's. I know, it's a little different.
Wrong, must be, I was playing around, I mean, I.
You have it, right.
Goes up, I was Googling, I was like.
No, you have it right, like you have everything working, you just need to do. Hmm. Another, cuz like I narrowed it down by book dot by underscore links.
So if I did the image.
So try that, do it like you did, um. Like make another const image URL or just do it const purchase URL. Like make a whole nother, you're trying to call another piece of information in there, there you go.
Alright, let me.
And then do, um. Book dot. By.
Book dot by?
Yep, B U Y.
Oh, dumb.
And then underscore.
I was literally thinking like bye, okay, don't, don't.
And then you got links.
Links?
Yep, L I N K S. And then dot URL. And then I had to, um. Like underneath it where you did the output, I did, uh.
I would do another output?
I'm not, see, I'm not sure what your output does in yours.
It's pulling in. The data from the list.
Okay, so it's output equals. So you have H four image source. H two, shoot.
Oh.
Um, see if you can. Command S and see what the, just putting that link in there does.
Okay, without putting output.
Yeah. Like troubleshoot real quick and see what this does.
Didn't do anything on the.
Alright, so it didn't do anything, maybe you do have to have that output in there? I'm just not sure what you would. Do in the output.
To my. Um. Okay, hold on, I'm gonna stop sharing for just a second, I'm gonna back over to my postman. And.
So I would try to do the output for.
Maybe I might need to add another. Something in my HTML.
See if you can do the output like you did for the image, just use, you guys, you know how you have like the output and then the image and all that good stuff down there? See if you can do the same thing for the by links.
Okay.
And here I will, while we're at it, share my screen. And just because like it's. I don't know, you can't see my mouse, can you?
Um, yeah, I can see your mouse.
Wait, cuz like this right here, this whole piece is how I made the list. And this is how I put the purchase link in there. But.
Oh, maybe I do need a, um.
Hmm, but like I only narrowed it down to the Amazon links on each book. And then it actually, you know, I was like, oh my God, I was surprised it actually works.
Maybe.
Well, like you look like you have the right idea in there on. You know how you did the, um, output for the image? It looks like, it looks like if maybe you put one more of those in there for the by links that that would. But I think otherwise, like. It looks like you're pretty much done, because I'm, I'm pretty sure like the main thing they wanted to make sure we could do was to get that whole. API done. And get it working and like you've, you've definitely linked all the books and all of the things to it, so. Did you get like the description of the books too?
No.
If you, alright, here.
No.
Share yours again.
Hold on, no, I got the name and the author, oh my gosh, I still have so much work to do.
No, no, it's.
Oh my gosh, I'm about to just jump out of a window.
No, you did really good.
No, I did not.
Listen, a lot of this, like, uh, actually this whole project was me working with Max and Doug. It, I mean, like they made me do it, but it was. If they weren't here, a, a lot of times they were like, okay, so what do we do next? And I was like, I don't know.
Um, no, I just have the names and the authors, but I guess that's all I put in. I have book title, author, image, so I guess I'm missing, yeah. Description, I would have to add in and.
Do the same thing, yeah, you did with the constant MR image URL and the output, just do the same exact thing, but make it for. Um, book dot description. Cuz you know how you did book dot book underscore image?
Mm-hmm.
Make that same thing for book dot description. Cuz that'll narrow it down to the description of the book and it gives you a little blurb of what the book is.
Okay, hold on, let me stop sharing for just a second, so I can toggle in between these two. Okay, so let me get back to the purchase one, I'm gonna do that in just a second.
I would just comment that out for a sec until you can.
Alright, so that's commented out. This is just, and I was like, oh my gosh, I finally got it all. I finally got it all aligned and, um. Okay, so, description. Cuz we're supposed to use what they use on the. And what they give us in postman, like that's what I was using, like. The book underscore image, like I just did it the way they did it in postman, like that's right, right?
Yeah, you, but like the, uh, cuz I, I didn't even touch postman for this, um, I literally just opened the console. And then like did inspect on the page and then opened the console. And when we were just doing the make, the API calls, it was giving me all the information and I had to literally. Dig down into the data, into the books and keep doing those little dropdowns that I showed you to do. Until you got to what you wanted to narrow it down to. And like I did book dot book underscore image, book dot title, book dot author. Cuz it's like, you know, the whole layer thing, the onion thing that he talks about, um, you have to, with the dot notation, you have to peel back everything. So you have to go, it's always gonna be the book, because you're going into books and then description or by links or. Whatever you wanna target after that. But like you did it with the other ones.
Okay, I got the description in there. That was.
Ah, see, you did it.
But now let me, I just commented this out. Now let me go back, I guess, and play around with this.
Yeah, there you go. And then I think the only thing you're. Missing now is like the output. For the purchase.
Find that is, okay, wait, let me go back over here and see. What is it? I'm I use the postman like for everything. I just I did it the way they did it in postman. Um. So let me just double check and see how they have.
I would try, um, output plus equals and then.
Oh, I should, oh, okay. Oh, you did tell me to put by links. Okay, by link, so. Let's see. Let's see if this works. Trial and error. That's what it's been today.
Yep, well, a whole lot of it. Girl, trust me, like before I got into any of these classes with Max or Doug, I sat here and stared at this thing for four hours. And did not get one line of code written. It was horrible. Oh, it refreshed.
Oh, oh, I just.
I take that out.
Command Z. Okay, there goes. Alright, let me. Alright, so they do have a listens by underscore link. It must not be.
So like the image should have been almost, it should have been almost the same as the image.
Mm hmm. Okay, no, that's not okay. Let me. I guess play around with this. Hold on, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second.
Yeah.
So it should be the same as the image. Or I was over here about this guy. I was trying to schedule one on ones with anybody today. I was like, come on, y'all. I just need. I know I shouldn't have waited all week.
No, you know who would have been, um, really good at this? Well, we kind of needed a little vacation from it, um. Is, uh, Palash is great and so is Amber Lynn. They're both like really, really good at this stuff.
Hmm, where is he at today?
I know.
Open before.
There, I just take both of them.
Hmm?
I just take both of them in Slack.
Hey, your purchase looks really different than mine. Like.
I I only did.
Back ticks and everything, didn't you?
Um.
I'm missing something.
I, that's only because I did. Can you still see my screen?
No.
Okay, um. That's only because I did. I called the HTML in the JavaScript. So I did the back ticks here and here, and that's why I did I got. Put a little money in curly brackets in order to do that. It was just.
You called it out and you and you said in your HTML?
Yeah, like let book HTML equal and then I did the back ticks. I'm trying to figure out. Let HTML.
Add it into my HTML first. Because. I added the output. I added the DIV ID output to call it. In. The JavaScript, but maybe I need to. Add that in there. Or something. I didn't do the class that, but I did style them individually. Did you do a style CSS too?
I I did, but it was super short. I just styled the body. I did a little bit of padding on top and then I did a background color to separate like the. Yeah.
Okay.
It was super short.
So I probably don't need. I did that part, right? My book list. And. What is your, what is your section? Oh, your section has everything in it. Okay.
Yeah, cuz like literally this. Is where I called the API. And. This is where it put everything back into the HTML. Like all of this down here is just notes from me and Doug.
Okay, wait, cuz I have, alright, so.
And this is, it's so hard to like. Bounce stuff off of each other because everybody names stuff so different. So you're just like, is this the right thing? Did I do this right? Did I do this? And it's like, yeah, we can all just, you know, name it whatever we want. So it just, it looks so much different.
Wait, so you added a P tag, but it's in the Java, so. Under the class.
And a quick little, um, thing that he taught me that, uh. Doug taught me to do was like when you're looking for an image up here, you know how we have to put like an image source and all that good stuff? In our HTML. So you literally just jump up here and do image and do this. Put IMG and enter. And then you copy and paste this down into here. And then just add what you need to add into it.
Ah.
Yeah, cuz it's a lot easier than trying to figure out how to write all that and. Well, do I need to add source? Do I need to add this? Do I need to add that? He's like, just do. Here's a little cheat. He's like, just pop up here. Oh, yay. Here she comes. He's like, just pop up here and type what you need. And push enter and then just take that little snippet of code and throw it down there instead of trying to figure out how to do it.
So in your API, you did make API calls. You didn't do the promise, promise thing?
I did, but so here, up here, the fetch and then promises is what this green is what, um. Is how. What's his name, Ryan? This is how Ryan taught us how to do it.
Yeah.
Yes, and then down here when Max and I were going over at Max was like. Here's an easier way to do it because it's async and await is pretty much like replacing. Fetch then and then it's always await because. When you fetch something, this might return a promise or a pending. And when you do the await, it is actually going to wait until this gets. The response and then it's gonna constant data, const out the data and then it's gonna wait until it gets the response again. So he taught me the little await thing is actually. Waiting to get the response from the next thing instead of just sitting there with a pending like fetch and promise will.
Oh, well, that's a nice little, I'm gonna leave it the way it is, but. Nice little nifty trick that he definitely didn't tell us cuz I was went through when I did the promise, promise.
Yeah.
Watching these videos. Um. Yeah, I'm just gonna play around with this for a little bit and figure out how to get my price in there. This. Driving me insane.
Yeah, you can always, I just, I, that's the only way I knew how to do it was to get. Well, like I was targeting one list instead of all of them. And like I literally spent four classes with Doug. I just kept, we just kept returning it on and turning it on. Because the half an hour kept running off and at the very last one, he was explaining, he's like, so if you want to do this for all the lists and then it cut out and he was like. He was done at that point, two hours of me stumbling across my words and everything. He was definitely gone. So he was like, are you good for now? I'm like, yeah, I got it running and got it working. So we're good. Let's just leave. Leave it at that.
Poor Doug. We ran into the ground this weekend.
Did you? How did you? How is yours going?
Mine is a flipping mess. Um. Like I got a lot of the the drop, the JavaScript stuff going, but then. Somewhere in my HTML, I screwed something up and it's not linked, so I can't inspect it and it's driving me nuts because. I know it's there and I can't see it. Um.
You wanna share and see if we can figure it out?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna stop mine. You're gonna pop yours up.
No.
Let's see if we can figure it out cuz probably like a random apostrophe somewhere.
I swear. Because I'm like following along with the video and then I'm stuck because I can't make sure that what I'm doing is. Right.
Mm hmm, cuz you don't have anybody to sit there and be like, no, don't do it this way.
My gosh, um. Where the heck is this? Oh, the share screen is on a different.
It should be at the bottom of Zoom.
Yeah, mine disappeared. Uh, I'm trying to make sure I got the right window. I think it's this one.
Uh huh.
So, um. I have all that, you know, basic whatever. And then I go here, you got all this stuff going on, which is great, but then I try to. Um, let's see here. It showed up on a different screen.
Line eight, column one.
Line A?
Eight. There's a.
Right.
So what's wrong? I see, I don't know.
He says it's from the one above, though, like he'll say it's from the line above. Pretty or shows the error, but it's from the line above and the line above looks fine to me. So, but it also like when we cut, when we use the HTTP, um. Request for. The API, it told me there was an error in that and I'm like, I copied it from the New York Times website, literally. I did, but it's not that. It's telling me that it wants a comma instead of a semicolon after HTTPS and I'm like, that's not how this goes. Uh, hang on, I'm sorry. I'm just rambling.
Where? Let's see your. Fetch and promise again.
Is this the one? Yeah, here it is. No. It is here, supposed to be. Yeah, right. Fetch is online too. Um. So I have.
I use, I didn't put my, um. HTTPS and quotes. I use the single quotes for that.
Ooh. That might help. Because it does not like those.
And then you have to call out your, your get. Um, your method get to. Retrieve the information.
Um, oh, I didn't think I got to that part yet because I couldn't, I couldn't check my work, so it was frustrating.
So where I have, where you have the first dot then data?
Yep.
I have dot then response and then the second one is data. So maybe that's what is.
No, I had a problem before, before.
Then it says. And then it says return response dot JSON. See if that works because other than that, yours looks exactly like mine. But the console log is in. Oh, no, you did. You got that.
So let me see because. Yeah, I don't know what the, okay, let me change my screen because when I, when I go to the inspect, um, tools, it's like empty. And it doesn't even show the hello world. So it's definitely not linked and I don't know what's going on.
It's not cuz it's prettier is given an issue with it.
Uh huh. Always me, always me, but. Yeah, so here's, here's what it was showing me. There's nothing. In my, um. Inspect console. Like, nothing. And in the code, there's code for hello world.
Um. Do either of you know if we have a separate key? Or are all the keys the same when we do?
They're different based on your token. All the keys are different.
I know they said the key changes with each, um, not each request, but like. Maybe each project.
Is there? A way that you can, um.
Her JavaScript is missing something, though. Can you bring your? VS Code back up. She didn't call, she didn't call out. The get to even get the response. That's missing. From the first line after fetch.
This here.
Okay, you don't have to console log out the response. You can take that out, but then you can do, um. Where's your?
It's not connecting my, my JS, um, all this.
Because you haven't made the constant make API calls yet.
Wait, is the JavaScript active into the HTML?
That's the problem.
Tag. I don't see the whole thing. No, it's gotta scroll over to the other side.
Here's one, but this, um, this is the one that Ryan told us to put in. In the instructions, he said to put a script tag. Um, in the body.
You named it SRC.
Is this bootstrap?
So what?
SRC.
So what you're calling? Is the whole HTTPS right there, um. You're, when you put a script tag in there, you're just supposed to do script. And then space SRC equals and then put whatever you named like your New York Times JS in.
Yeah, that's where I screw.
Oh, yeah, it should say NY Times dot.
There you go.
Inside of a string?
Nope, just.
Yeah, just like you.
You got it. There you go.
The API, um.
No.
All your New York Times page.
New, um, put in that NY Times dot JS.
Yep. So when you're doing a script and you're asking it for a source, you're literally just saying. Hey, I want this page to pop into my HTML right here. So that's why you gotta call your New York Times page in that source and that SRC.
Hmm, uh huh.
And I'll see if, see if you could pop over to your other screen and see if that worked.
I hope so, but prettier is already pissed at me.
Yeah, prettier can.
No, it's not there. Hang on. No, unc caught syntax error, unexpected token at NY Times dot JS. What did I do wrong? Wasn't there supposed to be like a bracket maybe?
No, that part is right. You gotta go back to the JavaScript.
Did I get the wrong name? Did I get the wrong name? That's the
What I was gonna do right there is, um, if you can just comment out that whole thing.
All of it?
So
I know, all of it except for the hello world, then we'll know that it's actually linked.
No, do, so, d- take away that second forward slash, yep, and put a star in there.
Multiple line.
Yep, and just make sure you close it at the bottom. Now put another star and then, yep, and then a forward slash. Now see if your hello world worked.
Hang on. There's so many of these open, I have to find the, the most recent one.
Do you have rectangle working on yours?
I do.
If you just like pull one to the side of the screen, it should make like a silhouette of a square that'll pop it. Yeah, and that way you can, it'll be easier for you to see both of them at the same time.
I got fifty-three things going on at once and I'm still not as well versed as you all, there it is.
Is, is the hello world there? Alright.
Yes.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you, um, the fetch that I have up here. And you're gonna take your key out of your, um, commented out and replace my key with it.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna copy this and throw it in the chat. Oh shit, that's not the right.
You think the issue is the key? Ha, I feel like it was
No, 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 I don't know what the issue is with yours. But if sometimes when I can't figure it out, if I literally just copy paste it over my code or like underneath it when yours is all. So if you just copy and paste that into yours, the one I put in the, and then keep yours commented out and then just replace my key with yours.
Alrighty. Where is, did you put it in?
Yeah, go into the chat.
The Zoom chat?
I don't see it in the Zoom chat either.
Sorry, I'm an asshole.
Put it in Slack.
No, I didn't send it cuz I'm like sitting here staring at it like, yeah, it's right there.
Oopsies, okay, so, whoa. Okay, so you're
Mine's all commented out though.
No, I was just looking at the actual link itself and I could find the key cuz it's after the Let me see if I just do that.
Alright, so.
Bring it over here.
Oh, I don't, no, 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 don't, don't take your key out of there.
Oh.
I think your key is specific to you, what I was saying is like, take that whole piece of code.
This here?
No, the one that I put in the chat.
Yep.
Um, comment your code out because you see how your code's got that little red thing and it's pissed off about something? If you comment your code out and then stick the code
Oh, I see what you mean.
Put in chat in there.
Yep.
And then just take your key out of your code and put it in the code that I gave you over my key. No, don't like, uh, just comment it out. I wouldn't like delete it or anything.
That's why I'm always lost cuz I get rid of everything. It just, okay. It was the, this one.
No, comment the whole thing under console log, hello world out. You got the closing comment, you just gotta go up, yep, right there and just do the
My god.
Star, yep.
What the heck?
You got it, forward slash and then star. Nope, you got it backwards.
Damn. So slash and then, yeah.
Yep, and then go on the bottom and put star and then slash. Alright, now in the chat, copy my whole code. And then paste it right on line twelve. Yeah, there you go, and I mean, you might have to go in there and undo all the comment outs cuz I don't know, I didn't delete them all.
There is definitely a way to do that en masse.
I couldn't tell you, they have so many shortcuts and I'm like, yeah, I'm not, no idea.
See, yeah, yours looks like this.
It looks the same as yours, that's what I'm saying, I'm like, I don't understand why you have you get Two more before fetch.
Two more before?
Nope, two more, yep, comments out before fetch on tw- line twelve. Yep, take those comments out.
Okay.
Now, if you copy your key code and then paste it over mine, nope, don't copy mine.
I'm trying to. Oh, I, okay.
Yeah, you can just paste it over it.
Now I gotta find it. It's in the
No, right there, up in the green one, in your co- in your commented out code, yep, copy and paste that key right over mine. There you go.
Hmm, not with that, uh, that last string.
Un- 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 terminated string lateral, that's so stupid.
Oh, cuz I didn't close it.
Oh, there you go. I can't see it past our little pictures in the top there, maybe I should close those.
Okay.
Alright, now pop up your thing and see if it worked for the I have no idea why sometimes it just doesn't like code and then you pa- copy and paste the same exact thing over it and it's like, okay, now I'll take it.
That's annoying and freaking frustrating. Okay, so it says live reload enabled, hello world. I don't see.
Can we see your, um, your other page where you're looking?
My bad.
Oh, you're good.
Let's see. I think it's this one, yeah. What? Dude, that was not there on the other screen. Ended it, all this other status okay stuff showed up, that was not there.
What are you looking at?
Yeah, we can see in the console?
No, all we can see is your, um, are you in a different page? That's probably why, cuz you only share one page at a time.
I thought I shared the desktop cuz I drag everything over to the desktop, so let's see, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright, if you swap between like desktop one and two, it'll only show us the one that you share with us.
So let's do desktop two because that's where all that stuff is. Can you see?
There you go.
Alright.
Okay, it's beautiful, so if you pop down that object.
Oh shit.
Look at what's in there. All your best sellers.
Dude.
See, and, and there wasn't even, I didn't even see anything wrong with your code, like it's so, it's weird sometimes.
Okay, so we asked for three titles, right?
Um, I'm not sure what he asked us for. Or I literally just have like the graphic manga list and that's it, I mean, there's five books or something in it.
There's three dates in the real, in the
Oh, don't worry about the published dates, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna keep digging down into your date, your object and your results, you go down to your results, it should give you a list of all of the, now if you pop open your list.
Gosh.
It'll give you all of the different, here's the combined print and e-book fiction, I know, pretty freaking cool how it does that.
That is a lot of information.
Now you have your API linked, at least.
Yes, thank you. It was that, I don't know what the fuck, it will, I was sorry, I was missing something that was not connecting my JS file and I couldn't do this and it drove me nuts.
No, you got it now.
Thank you. So I did have a one-on-one with Mel Schedule, but I think he, um, what's the word they use? He, what's the word when people don't show up?
Oh, he
Confirm or something first?
No, I've never, it's usually, and I have a Zoom link. I'm literally sitting in the Zoom and, and it's like the host hasn't even joined yet, so I was like, okay. Let me go in the classroom cuz at least I know the ladies are in there and they got some things going, but thank you for that.
Yeah, do you have, um, time at all tomorrow to hit up Doug?
Um, yeah, I, I do have a, a one-on-one with Ryan in the morning, but like
I would try, Doug is like the bomb dot com on script JS is. And what he did was he went through and he made me go through all of the JS properties again and understand them and then made me type all of this out myself.
And that's why I ran out of time cuz he does do that and that's wonderful, but like
Yeah.
deadlines are.
It did help, like if you can snag another, I know this project's due tonight, but I don't think, you know, as long as you're getting it done and getting it on there. Cuz like now it's kinda, you're, you've got like seventy-five percent of the work done as, you know, is what Max said. Is just making the API call, now you have to do all this little stuff and get one of those lists or all of those lists to show up on your page.
Question, so the imaging comes automatically from the New York Times website? That's nothing we have to like go out and grab?
Well, you, you do in a sense have to go out and grab it. You have to like target it with, um, like the book dot author or book dot description or book dot buy links. You have to target it and that's why if you're in that little um, where it showed you all those lists, it's cool to be able to go, okay, well now I have to, I have to type book and then if I want the author, I have to tou- type book and then scroll down and type author and then I have to figure out what else I'm trying to target with that.
Those are functions, right?
Uh, you have to make a function that targets it all, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, okay, so the API stuff, I won't say it's done, but it's done.
Yeah.
And then all the rest of it is just really sorting through it and making JavaScript code to pull everything where you need it.
Into HTML and back and forth, yeah.
Okay, um, not too much CSS on this project, right? I got just, um, the colors and
Yeah, I literally have like three lines of CSS on there, it's not, yeah, I was like, I'm not messing around with this because I don't. Uh, it was hard enough the two hours with Doug trying to figure out. Yeah.
It's just, it's crazy cuz it's a, it's a specific way to do it, but then you get to name it whatever you want to, so like that's confusing as all get out.
See, that's what I have a big problem with too, is when I was just telling her is like looking at all of our codes and everything, it's hard to be like, yeah, we all did it the same way because all these words are different and we can't just what we named it, but it's still, it's a little confusing.
I mean, it's cool, it's cool that you can choose your own, um, you know, specific file names and all that, but looking at your files and my files, they are same but different. Tara, are you done?
Uh, I can't get my purchase price in there for whatever reason, I'm struggling with it.
Purchase price?
Yeah, like, to, um,
The link to buy them.
Buy them.
Oh, yeah, 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 I was gonna say, I thought that was
Time to add that in there, that goes blank.
And it's
Force tag?
Well, it's funny because like I have mine in there, but she's doing all of the books, I'm literally onl- only doing one section of books. So like I narrowed it down by that section and I don't know how to narrow it down for all of them to help her out with that, like, we both have the same thing, but it's completely different. And like
And I don't know why I can't follow the same layout that I followed, like I, it's just, it's blowing my mind cuz everything else is pretty much like, you know, down, like it was, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't understand why you couldn't do it like you did the images too because you're not narrowing it down to each book with the images. It's pulling up the image in each section for each book, like it's not pulling up the same image for every one of them. So you, in theory, you'd think you'd be able to do the same thing with the links, the buy links.
Oh, maybe I was supposed to use
Okay. Did anybody get, oh, here's Amber, say, did anybody get a hold of Palash?
Um, I did, I tagged them both, but I couldn't.
That wasn't a personal message to me, dear.
Oh, yeah, see how great I am?
No, you've been coding for hours, your brain is cheese.
No, no, I just got on here, um, this is, that's, that's bad.
Listen, this project broke everybody, I am broken, kay? Amber managed to get some camping in.
Yay, you went, how was, what did you get, three days?
Wednesday through Saturday morning.
Oh, that's beautiful.
I, I was in charge of watching the sleeping child, so then I just text my husband, okay, she's awake, come back. And then I, uh, one time, well, I, I did have, I did meet with Doug. And he helped for a little while and then Everly, my youngest, woke up from her nap and was screaming, I'm like, I think I have to go cuz I can't hear so. I tried.
So, um, how did you get your project working?
It's not.
No? Wanna share, maybe we can?
Sure.
So we got, uh,
Right, uh, do you have a href in yours to call out the price?
I do.
I'm not gonna use image for price, so I would use the href, right?
I, I use href. And then I just threw like an Amazon tag on it because I only tagged the Amazon, but you, you wouldn't even so I did a P tag and then I wrote purchase in there just so you can actually, like it says purchase on there and then with and then an A tag with href. And then I went to book dot buy underscore links dot URL, but I also threw a zero in there in square brackets because I was only narrowing down the Amazon link to each book.
Now I'm second guessing something.
No, don't second guess it, you gotta work and leave it alone.
No, 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 I did, I didn't get anything done.
Did you see the API working?
Nothing, I mean, I got, I got the API working, yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, cuz in the chat, there's a whole thing, all you gotta do is, um, steal the code from the chat to get the API working and then you do, but just make sure you put your key in there instead of my key in there.
I would, let me, let me get rid of these, hold on, so that because right now prettier is yelling and JavaScript is yelling. And it was because of this last line, so.
Did your quotes in the, um, the HTTP line give you a problem? From the New York Times site cuz they made me change mine to the single ones to work. There he is.
No, I have double quotes too.
Mine wouldn't work, they gave me a problem.
I think sometimes this stuff glitches and doesn't wanna work regardless of whether we have it right or not. That's why I said like taking your whole code and literally just copy pasting it over itself sometimes works for me, like I shit you not. It's, I think sometimes it just glitches and it's like, oh, well, I've prettier's been mad all day and she's staying mad whether or not we give her a box of chocolates, you know? She's moody sometimes, so.
Right, and even a refresh
Hey, there's Palash, hi.
Palash, we need your expertise.
Oh, shocks, okay, sure.
I have mine working, Tara is trying to get the URLs for the purchases working and she's got everything else working, she just can't seem to get the uh, purchase thing in there, every time she tries it, like wipes the whole page out.
Sure, um, do you wanna share a screen?
Tara?
Yeah, oh, oh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sharing, hold on. Alright, so. Alright, so this is what is there so far. Um, but I'm missing my purchase link over here.
Gotcha.
Know what I'm doing. I thought I could just follow the same layout that I followed for. The images, the author, the titles. I added in a description with no problem, I didn't even know I was missing that. I didn't even know it was supposed to have a description.
It looks awesome. Really nice.
Yeah, I'm just looking, um, output is. I think, um, the problem maybe like in your, on your line number thirty-five, like.
Oh, I know I did that wrong, I just kept trying to play around with it, I just, I didn't know what it, cause every time I. Like every time I put it in there, it literally like takes everything on this page away, besides like the. This, this part up here.
Right, um, do you wanna try it again and uh, on your line thirty-five, like between those. Two, uh, between the A tag, um. Before it like, we, before you close the A tag, like, do you wanna put some like anything? Um, for now, it's test, the word test. Like. Yeah, let's give it a try and see. Works.
Oh, it didn't wipe it out, but.
Right, so yeah, there's this.
Oh, there it goes, oh my god, there it goes.
Yeah, I think that was. What you can do is like, you can like type in buy now, yeah, purchase or something.
There you go.
But, so now do I need to go back to, because I don't want it right there.
Okay.
Like, how come it's?
So I think because this um, A tags are usually like inline elements. Uh, do you wanna like wrap a div around them, uh, like sort of like wrap a div. Around this, yep, on this line.
Put it inside my backtick.
Uh huh, like div start and at the end like div close and see what that does.
I'm just gonna start another line, cause.
Yeah, can you uh, get rid of the, the, um, semicolon between the div?
Between the A tag and the div tag?
Yes, yes.
And the very closing. The closing, yep, go back a bit before the div tag, you gotta semicolon.
Oh, I'm like, where? Okay.
Okay, and give it a save and a refresh and let's see.
And now look at your page. Oh, well, if it works, touch the purchase and see if it brings you to.
There you go.
Oh, that's awesome.
Beautiful.
Yeah, but you did it.
Not the way I wanted to look. But I'll just play around with it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, you can then style it as you want, you can like add a button or something if you want, but instead of that A tag and that'll, that's gonna work too.
Oh, I could've used a button tag, huh?
Is everyone all set with theirs though?
I got mine working, I.
It's the JavaScript for me.
Uh, do, does anyone need um, any assistance with theirs?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. Do you wanna share a screen?
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, honestly, I'm just sitting outside and um, I was almost like finishing off mine. Mine.
Yeah, I saw where. Tara was and I, I got to this part and then I. See, where am I?
Oh, wow.
Nope. And then it goes object, dot, dot, object, so.
Okay, um, let's see, okay, so what you're trying to do is like, you are uh, building this. Drop down that you pick a category and then it gives you. Okay.
I kinda gave up on that part, I just wanted one book to show up.
I think you're, you're doing, you're doing where you have books and then the array afterwards is you're literally just calling the object of the object. And that's why you have all those objects on there. Is that? No, maybe not.
Right.
But like. Does dot notation gonna work for that?
What's book list, um, can you scroll up a little? Book list.
Book list equals books.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
And books equals hardcover fiction dot books.
Okay. And when you console log it, it gives you, can you click on your browser now, on your browser's console? When you, sorry about the noise, can you open the, one of these, um? Gotcha, Jen, Jen might be right, like, do you wanna try the dot, dot, dot operator? Um, in your line twenty-seven, before books list, try the dot, dot, dot thing. And if you go now, yeah. Click on your browser, so it's giving you objects back, so that's cool.
So she maybe have to target it a little bit further than the book list or the books?
You can do like two things, like e- either you can put that dot, dot, dot books list into a new, um. Into a new variable, or you can just um, use a for each and. For every single object in that array on top that says, uh, in your console that where it says eighteen.
I, I feel like this one, oh.
How about?
I just gave it five times.
Um, okay, how about you do? Uh, on your line twenty-sixth. Um, twenty-sixth, can you do dot, dot, dot to books within a bracket? And, yep, dot. Uh, sorry, within a parentheses, sorry, my bad. And remove the dot, dot, dot from twenty-seven. And see if that works. Can you click on your browser, uh, no, unexpected token. Do you want, also wanna remove the um, semicolon of twenty-sixth? Cause it's making it red, no, it's not gonna work, so what we can do is.
So is that the line above where it's making the red, is that the one that's?
Yeah, okay, so that's happening in the category name of books and you're console logging every book. So let's, um, how about? You create another loop inside of this for loop that you're in right now. Um, you can comment this twenty-sixth line out. Right.
Oh, no.
Oh, everything got commented out.
Yeah, take the star out of there, yep, and then put another forward slash.
Yes. Um, okay, now can you go to your um, browser and see what?
It's showing my HTML.
Right. Okay, so. This, um, these divs, are these coming out of the for loop? Or are these coming out of something after that?
Um, up here.
Up here, okay. Gotcha.
Um, I put, I, I put a parent ID div on top of here, but maybe I should change these to P's.
Okay, so let's go into your for loop and build a new one. Yes.
It's right here.
Sure. We can do that, yeah, for, let's say, um. Book of. Um, books list. Right, oh, sorry, let, for let book of books list.
Okay.
And. Inside just console log out. Um, book dot. What's it, title, book dot title, let's see. Yeah, on your line twenty-third, uh, you gotta start a, uh, that braces, brackets, braces. At the end of your line twenty-third. Like, get rid of the co- semicolon.
Okay.
And start a, what am I calling?
There you go.
Yeah, and close it after your. Yeah, you can do that. And let's see what it console logs out. Oh, um, books list was not a rebel. But it's, uh.
Did she define book list?
Um, book list was.
Books. Oh, oh, okay, yeah, it's. But it's kinda like, it's, can you comment, um, twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth out and, cause it's still giving you some. Thing, right? If it doesn't work, I'm gonna share my code and I'll kinda like show you how I did it, can you click on the browser now? Yeah, it's giving you, um, everything, so it's IDs book list. Can you scroll like really up, like where's book list again?
Added in here just a second ago.
Yeah, it was. Okay, so, okay, let's, I'll restart, um, for your category name, you have hardcover fiction dot display name for all, okay. For. Gotcha. Category name of.
Books list equals.
Book, right, books.
That's what I had it as equaling before.
Gotcha, oh, uh, you, you're putting books in there, gotcha. I can't click on the browser again, cause like something changed, okay, so that's what it's looping, or these five fives are actually books, got it. So, inside all books.
Does, does play name have something to do with it?
Display name, maybe, hmm. Can you, can you console log, log, uh, after your nine, uh, line nineteenth, can you console log category name? See what's hitting in, yep, after this one. Uh, add a new line, um.
Add a new.
Yep. Okay, it's given you hardcover fiction. So it's displaying the name of it, okay, um, alright, I think I have a little hunch, okay, go into your line twenty-third. And replace category name. With the word book. Right, and now. Comment out or you can delete, um, line twenty-fourth. And, uh, in your line thirty-two, change books list to book. Singular book, yeah. Let's see now, alright, so now you're getting all your books, okay, now. On your line thirty-one, uh, thirty-first, can you do book dot title, just add dot title? Gotcha, and now if you click, yeah. So now it's giving you all your titles, um, what you can do is. Now you can e- enter HTMLM out, um, so how, how have you been? Doing this, like, there's like, um, in our, um, throughout the class, like people are doing, using dot map, people are using dot filter. Somebody's just using simple for loops, whatever's easy for you. Gotcha, okay, can you click on your browser?
Sure.
Yes. Um.
I was, I was trying to do this like the, I.
Oh.
So like books list or maybe it's. Book now or. That inner HTML equals books and then putting the plus, 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 plus.
What's books list again, like in your HTML, is there a books list? Or that ID, okay. Gotcha, um, in your, can you scroll up in your, over your line thirty-fourth in the script? So what we're gonna do is, um, we're gonna, before the for loop starts, scroll up a little, please? Yeah, before the for loop starts, um, yeah, hit enter and. Declare like a new string variable, so say let HTML equals string. Oh, sorry, I mean like two, uh, two, um, quotation marks, just so it's like a string value. Yep, that's it, and, yep, semicolon it, and then in your for loop. Um. Before your line thirty-two, add a new line that would. Put all these titles in the. Variable HTML, so that would be HTML. Plus equals. Um, and now you can do the, that backtick thing, um. Right, let's copy it in. But the thing is, like in this ID, in this, like, there's no variables, so what you can do is. Let's just, um, delete all of it and let's create a new one. Okay.
Sorry.
Right, so, no, no, that's okay, um, so let's start with new backticks and start with like H one. An H one element. Um, right.
With an ID?
Uh, no, ID, I don't think ID is necessary, but we'll find out if we need it. And you can do that, uh, that template literal thing that when you, um, dollar sign and. Dollar sign brace, yeah, book, book dot title. Um, you close the H one.
Okay. So I wasn't supposed to close it over here, correct?
No, 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 yeah, that book dot title thing comes between the two H one, open and closed tags. Oh, sorry, my bad, so here is. Hmm, okay, here is what I'm trying to, I'm gonna send it on chat. So, yeah, like that. And then close it. Gotcha, so perfect, so what we have done is like, we have looped over all the book titles and put them in like H one tags. And all we gotta do is like, um, add M to the, in the inner HTML of books dot list, so on your line thirty-five. In the script. Um, you're putting books dot lists in our HTML, like, would you? Do you wanna try putting HTML instead, cause we are putting all these. Sorry, sorry, books dot inner dot HTM, inner HTML equals HTML. Cause that's what we're putting all our H ones into, right, make sense? Alright, let's see.
Yay.
Yay, okay.
The object anymore.
Now you can do the same thing with um. With their descriptions or authors. Right? And same with the images like all you gotta do is just. Fix that um your line thirty two and keep adding like IMG tags in there. And between those IMG tags like source can be book dot. I think image URL it is. And you can add similarly add a H two element with book author. And all that.
Okay.
See what I mean?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we have to do all of the categories on there as well or?
Um I. I mean, as long as like some of it works, it should be good, it depends, like what are you looking for, like are you looking for that dropdown now?
I I don't know, I would, I had like really high hopes and now. I just am so glad to have something on the screen, so now I can at least work from here and be so happy. Something shows up.
All you gotta tweak right now is um. I think what your book is, what your book list is, so it includes all those um. A- all the books and not just the. Hard hardcover fiction.
Right.
Right.
I can try what try sticking your um author in there. Underneath the book title.
Uh huh, yeah, like right in there.
So like on the next line, nope. On the next line, do a whole nother, just like you did with the book title, you're gonna try and do the same thing for like book dot author because. You're pretty much writing HTML and injecting JS into the HTML.
Very nice.
You got it. And now what you're doing here is just targeting the author of it.
And I'll I'll just put these in here to like.
You don't even really need that HTML up there.
No, okay.
Yeah.
It's so what you're doing right now in the JS is you're writing both the HTML and the JS and you're just mixing it together and it like. It kind of writes them both. In one line.
E R Y Amber.
Did you, let's see what your, yeah, what is? Is that? So if you put like um. In inside your H one tag, if you type. On your JS inside your H one tag, if you type. Title in there. Right after the H one. Just type the word title.
Okay.
And then space. Now see what it does. It pops up the word title in front of your title. So what you're gonna do is kind of like play around with that, go into your H three and put author in there, you can um. I I'm not sure, I did P tags and it actually. Layered them like the author comes up first and then down on the next line, the description. I'm not sure if it would work with the H one or H three tags.
So, yeah, I the with the H three, all you gotta do is in at the end of your line, you gotta add that, yeah, that tag um. Yeah, that's fine too, yeah.
See, P tag might separate it a little more um. And then you can even down under your book author, you can target, do the same thing with another P tag and target the description. And it will pop up the description of the books. But like after the P tag before the money sign, I would put like. Title or description or whatever, it's just and it'll like label it for you on the page.
You guys are amazing.
Well, you're writing it, see, and now look, it pulls the description out of the data and throws it onto your HTML. So like you have it down, you can keep doing that um. The way that. Uh he got me to do. The buy something URL on there was um in your HTML file, he would say like. Write an A tag with an href in it or A tag and. Start it. Like here um. If you start a new line in your HTML and just start an A tag.
Okay.
No, no, you don't have to.
No.
Well, you don't have to do all that, it's not gonna change anything. Yes, yeah, start an A tag in there. And just push enter. Oh, no, don't, you don't have to do the um. Just push A and then enter, yeah, you don't have to do all the other stuff, you can take that all all that right out. Yep, take it out. No, keep going. And then just type A and then enter. See how that pops up that whole thing? If you copy and paste that down. Into underneath your description. You can now do the same thing with that as you did with the title, author and description and you can target. The buy list by the buy links URL. So it would be um. Yep, right inside your href. Quotations. Nope, in the href quotations. You can. Target it with the money in the curly brackets.
On the buy link.
Do do book first.
Oh, book.
Yep, book dot. Buy underscore links. Dot URL. And I think that should pop up like the buy links for it. I don't see him, see that's it works for mine, but I'm only targeting one. Like I'm only targeting the best graphic manga books.
So um yeah, on your line thirty five, can you thirty fifth, can you like? Nest them nest the A tag within a P tag? Cause that's what was happening for.
Ah, there you go. That's what I was just about to say and I was on mute.
Nice.
I couldn't get it out fast enough.
In your console. In your console where it says eighteen, can you click on that? Um.
Yes.
There, yeah. And click on like that zero thing um the arrow. Yep. So it's gonna show us what's. Oh, okay. Scroll up a little in your.
What's in there?
Oh, yeah, that that's gonna work too. So if you scroll down, buy links, okay, so but yeah, buy links, okay, so the thing is, I think. The those buy links are in an array itself.
Okay, so buy links dot M by uh dot name.
Yeah. Let's, can you try that dot 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 operator again? Put your buy links, just the word buy links inside a. Inside the brackets. And then dot dot dot. Spread operator, yeah. Let's see, just like that if. Um uh bef- prefix it like before the word buy. See if that works.
Pretty here doesn't like it. That wasn't working for me there, I had to target. The Amazon one specifically. I think for all of the. I mean, I'm sure.
See those square brackets after links. And then put a zero in it, so do link square bracket zero. And then that should target the Amazon one the first. But it's not, no.
I'm gonna say.
Try console logging it out and see what it's given us.
Oh, take that period out for before or after links. There you go, now try it.
No.
See, this is literally, I'm gonna.
Okay.
Paste exactly what I have.
Sorry about that, um between your A tags, just add a word like purchase like Tara did.
We can see it. Oh, this one?
Yeah, like she she just sent um.
In between, so where instead of doing it where the target is. Yep, go in there. Click on your uh thing so we can see the, it's in between your closing A tag and closing P tag. Like type um, yep, on thirty five, no, keep going to the, yep, to the right where Palash wrote that.
Okay, yes.
Now write like Amazon in there. Nope, you're still in the in before target, there you go.
I'm looking at his line. Okay.
And now. See what that does.
Well, she has to take the target out the front, but it's the.
There should be the link in there, no?
Is she's got a. It's probably not highlighted or anything. Can she actually click it or no? No, so it's not working.
Here, I put the um the one that I have in there.
Because you're closing your tag like before the word Amazon. So move that closing A tag after the word Amazon.
Oh.
To the left a little bit. Before the closing A tag. There you go.
Right here, Amazon?
Yep, yep. And you can put that zero back in there and see if that. There you go, now it's gonna link it.
Almost there.
So put the try and put the zero back in in the closing brackets, see if that helps.
Wait, where is the the buy links name coming from?
No, take the names out. And do bracket zero. And then refresh your page. Oh, no, we broke it.
It's okay. Thirty times reported.
Might wanna just close the port out and read, pop it open.
Like this?
Yeah. There you go, and your Amazon works.
Teamwork.
And guys, I was able to throw an ID on that div I put in there, so now it's. Where I want it to be, it's on the right side of.
Natasha, you wanna give this a shot?
Right now I'm just absorbing. I'm gonna have a really long night, you guys. Cause I enjoyed my week off.
Yay, Amberlyn.
I have no idea how many times I cried today.
Stared at it for four hours, not right writing one line.
Emberlyn, in case you're looking for like adding that dropdown, I can send you my code and you can.
What's the dropdown, maybe I wanna add that. While I was sitting here listening, I I added a little. Hover to it. I don't know why.
I can share it with you guys um.
Amberlyn, tell uh Max to get into Zoom. Tell him to join us in Zoom.
I know, right, his vacation is over too.
I just I just told him, I'm like, okay, I've got this going, so someone else might need your time, and then I said, okay, we're all in Zoom and they said, come on in.
We could still see your screen too.
Yeah, that part.
I'll stop sharing, okay?
No, it's all right, we just. They want you to be surprised.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
Natasha, I think you should take a crack at this. It's gonna be easier for you with everybody here helping and. Like instead of you. Staring at it and not having any kind of support is. That's okay, that's kind of like the best place to start.
It's so bad.
It's okay. Fresh start. You got your URL working too, so that's like like Max said, that's seventy five percent of it done.
Amen to that. Okay, well, let's open this VS code here. Where are we?
Yep, can you put them both on one screen and try and do like a side by side?
Yes, let's do that. No, it's putting my Zoom on a different screen, hang on. No.
Um can you like drag it, yep?
Yeah, just squeeze it down.
Yeah.
From the corner of the page.
Okay. Um so the VS code is was. Just the one. I can't remember where the. Never mind. Okay, so you wanted that and what other one?
Your um your screen, the the page for it.
The inspect, yeah. No, that's not the one.
Well, you could close it and pop open another one. Just start.
It's showing up on my other desktop.
So.
Can you, yeah.
Slide three fingers up your mousepad. And now drag all the two pages or drag the Visual Studio code over to your desktop one. Drag it right up there into that, yep. Why isn't it working?
Because I'm on desktop one. Uh yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Or try making another desktop, just drag it over to an empty spot on the top of the page. When you have that, no, when you have the thing, oh, you do have.
Rectangle.
You do have.
He'll be here in two minutes.
So drag your uh drag your code over to the right side of the screen. And when it. There you go, and or it should like make a silhouette to the right side of the screen, you should be able to bring the other one up, there you go.
Okay, so leave that there. Each screen.
Let me share this with you, if you if you leave your mouse, if you press Ctrl Option. I, the rectangle will automatically put it in that corner. The other one, it's it goes in a square, it's I U J K. Control Option U or J or whatever you wanna put to to move it. So you can move them around like that. But they're not on the same. They're not on the same, well, now they are, so maybe. Go option um the other one.
You got it.
Now. It's the console. Okay. That was all tiny.
I dragged it by the corner of the screen, there you go, you got it.
Okay.
And now if you. Those two little files in the top left of VS code, it'll close half of that that smaller window, no above. There you go, it'll close that window so you can see the other ones.
Thank you.
And if you take your index or your New York Times and.
You look great.
Drag it down to the bottom, that might help. See, you don't even have to drag it. Okay, close out your um.
The problems. The problems.
There you go.
Okay. So. Um. The API stuff is in the objects.
Can you open the object? On your console?
In here, yeah.
Scroll down a little. Gotcha, so it's giving you the results, et cetera, so you are really set, all you gotta do is like um, what we did for Amberlyn, kind of like create a for loop that goes through all these um objects, this lists, and then inside that are the list of the books, so we go, we're going to go in every single list within that, every single book, and then log out the book title.
Every single list?
Yes, so let's give it a try, okay, oh, can you open your um VS code? Click on your VS code. Gotcha, um, you can close out the HTML for now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right, um.
Right, we're used.
Let's start a for loop, so, um. Hmm. Okay, let's declare a new variable in your next, hit enter. Right, yeah, like declare a new variable, so like, um, let um, books list equals. Um, so if you go in your, what are you rendering, um? Data.
Um, wanna go into the first zero, list zero?
Equals, I think it's data dot results.
Where did it go?
I got it. Data dot results.
Um, dot lists, I think.
I lost it.
It's okay, in your VS code. Um, that, yep. How about, um, you push your screen a little right, oh, Max is here.
Hi, Max.
There was a party going on.
Oh, yeah.
This is my early birthday celebration.
Time.
Right.
Birthday's coming up.
Happy birthday. Seven eleven, baby.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We're all gonna wear party hats to class on Tuesday.
Yes.
A virtual party hat that we can just toggle on and we'll all be.
That's it. Okay, so I am uh working on this JavaScript stuff and Palash is walking me through it.
Nice.
Yeah.
You might wanna move your book list inside of the promise between eighteen and twenty so that you have access to the data.
Oh. Let's do that. Uh, circle here.
That'll work. Oh, careful.
Right.
Oh, I'll let Max stay bored.
No, go for it.
No, no, no.
We called you in here.
Come on, show off.
You're nine twenty-three, you have a stray elder.
Ah, thank you.
So just um F on your line nineteenth, um, can you hit um, instead of console dot log data? Let's do data dot results and.
You want console log data dot results?
Nope, yeah. Actually, hit the, uh, put the console log element, console log that word in the next line, so like hit enter before console log starts. Right, and now, um, yeah, books list equals data dot results.
Right.
On your line nineteenth. Yep. Right, and yep, semicolon it out. And it's actually the same thing as books list, so if you go to your console and see what it's showing you. Right, so it's giving you uh the list of um all the, like the list of the yeah, li- like the object that contains the lists, and lists here are all the categories, so now to get in that list, all you gotta do is just go to your VS code and add dot lists on, at the end of your line nineteenth, add dot lists.
At the end of it?
Yeah, before the semicolon.
Lists. List.
S. Yep, and in your, in your line twentieth, um, replace data dot results with books list. So it's gonna show you what you're getting, so you're, you'll be getting all, an array of all the categories. Um, no, the, 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 the very, on line nineteenth.
Yeah, books list, okay.
Right, and okay, so if you can see in your console, it's giving you like an array of all the of all the objects in there, of all the categories in there.
Mm-hmm.
Right, um, so what you're now, there, there's like a few ways to do it, like, like I said, people are doing, using for each, people are using map. Amberlyn used the for loop, so we can do a for loop. Right? Max, what do you suggest?
I'm partial to look, to a for each, I think Ryan uh taught more of the map method, either one is totally fine.
I tried for each, um, okay.
Some students chose to skip the loop altogether and just pick one of the specific lists and then loop over the books in the list, that is also an option, really whatever you're feeling.
Isn't that what you did?
Let's, yeah, let's try that, cause that's gonna be like easy, quicker, and you'll understand it better.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is like, so right now it's returning you an array of all these lists, if uh, like Amberlyn did, she did lists, um, brackets, and there was a zero in there, that's gonna return you the first list, which will be the combined print and ebook fiction as it shows, so go back to your VS console and console log after your, the word books list, online twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
Add a bracket. Square brackets and zero in it. And if you click on your um console now, it's gonna show you the, the, so it returns the first list, which is the com- combined print and ebook fiction.
It gave me the first list because that is the um the zero index in that list, right?
Yes, right. Okay, now if you go back to your VS console to log all the books out, just.
So before you give the answer, Natasha, what data type is books?
Um.
In, in the console, where it says books? What data type is that?
That is an array.
And how do we know it's an array?
Well, besides the fact that it says so right there, um, because it has the, um, it has like objects. It has objects in, um.
In a list, so there are two ways we know, one it is square brackets instead of curly brackets.
Right.
And two, if we open that up we see indexes, right, we see zero through four, so we know that's an array.
Yes.
If it were an object instead of indexes, what would we have?
Uh, commas. If it were an object, it would just be one.
So go ahead and open up any one of those. Now we're in the object that is inside the array. So what is that thing called on the left side of the colon?
There, the not the, isn't the variable?
Mm-mm. It's not the value, it is the key. Yeah. It's so, that is the trick to this part of the exercise, if you switch back over to your code you can see that we're using all of these keys here, we're saying dot results. Why are we saying dot results? Because data is an object. Okay, now we go into the results and we get into the dot lists. Why do we use a dot there? Because results is an object. Now we get down into our lists and we're like, hmm, we wanna get into the objects that are inside of that, but lists itself is not an object. It is an array. So because of that, we switch over to using our bracket notation instead. So what we wanna think about here is we're peeling back, it's like layers of an onion, but now we've got to a turducken because it's not just carving out the, the outer turkey layer, we've now reached the next layer, and it's like, whoa, this is an array. So we gotta slice through this data a little differently. And so because of that, um because of that, we, we have to switch over to using the indexes. But now that we've gotten into the indexes, we're going, okay, well, what is books? Books is inside of an object inside of our lists up here. So we have to switch back over to our dot syntax here and use the key. And then, because we're inside of that, we are now back into the object of the book. And so that's what's, why it's important to look at all of this and go, okay, what is data? Data is an object. What is results? Results is an object. What is lists? Lists is an array, so we switch over to the bracket syntax. Okay, now inside that array, what are there? There are these objects here. So we're going to use dot notation again to get into our books, and then it's an array. So our array, we have to decide, are we either going to use that bracket syntax again to get to this, the specific book that we're trying to get to? Or are we gonna say it's an array, we wanna do something with every item in this list? And because of that, we're gonna do a loop, whether that's a map, whether that's a for of, whether that's a for let I equal zero, doesn't matter, but what we're looking at here is, we took the option of saying, just work with the first list which is why we could get away with the bracket zero here, but because we wanna do something for all five books in the array of books, we're gonna do a loop instead.
Okay, sounds appropriate. So this one is going to get the first list of books in the uh array.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so now I need to create a for loop for the, is it for like the title, the author, we're doing all those individually or?
The dot books, you're looping over all of the books inside the array of books.
Yes. Okay. So it's for.
Careful that you're inside your dot then though, cause you won't have access to it unless you're inside of the then.
This is true. Um, okay.
You're gonna do it after your console log.
Um. Book, what did I name it?
You're gonna say four parentheses const and then you're gonna uh put your book in there. So space book of book lists, books list dot what?
Results.
Dot books. Because look at what we're logging out here, we're logging out the books list bracket zero. What is this bracket zero representing?
The first array of books.
Not quite, it's representing the list of that, the list that has the books and a couple other pieces of information in it. So let me, let me, oh, can I do this? Um, yes, I can still request remote, sorry, I'm not on the, the admin account. So here, let's, let's change this up a little bit, because if I console log all here.
Uh-huh.
Um. What I'm gonna see come on, there we go. Is there eighteen items here? But if we open that up, what is this representing? This is representing every list category of bestsellers.
Hmm.
So what I, I like to do is go back and sometimes rename my variable and say, hey, this is lists of bestsellers.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm going through and I'm getting the zero index of that. What is that zero index? That is the combined print and ebook fiction list of bestsellers. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say const um fiction bestseller list equals my list of bestsellers bracket zero.
Mm-hmm.
So this kinda makes it a little bit more clear, hey, I'm diving in, this is all of the lists, this is just the fiction bestsellers.
Nice.
Now, in those fiction bestsellers, if we log that out we can see there's a bunch of different data in here. There is the list ID, there is this encoded name, there's the fact that it's updated weekly, and we're like, we don't care about any of that, what do we care about? The books.
Yeah.
So that's what we wanna loop over, we wanna loop over our fiction bestseller list, but the books inside of it. And we know it's the dot books because this is an object. So to test that this loop is working before we do anything with it, what do we wanna do? We wanna make sure we're getting access to each individual book. So to do that, we're gonna console log out the book. And now, we get, first of all, we go, before we look at any of that data, what data type is it?
That is it, it's another array.
Why is it an array?
Cause of the curly brackets.
Curlys are what?
Curlys are brackets.
Curlys are objects, squares are arrays.
Ooh. Okay.
The other way we know is because they are using key value pairs. You'll never see a key in an array. What does an array use instead of the key?
Objects.
No. What does an array use instead of a key?
Strings?
An index, a number.
Hmm.
So that, separate that out, that's two separate things, right? And an array is a list, it is only numbered, there is never a key in a, in a array, it's always zero, one, two, three. The object is using the key and the value pairs. So we need to know that data type because otherwise, we don't know how to access the data inside of it. When we want to reference the data inside of it, for example, we could put all of this data in an array. But i- if we did that, then all of this data would just be in an ordered list, and we're like, well, it would be much easier to be able to say book dot title than it would be to say book bracket four, because we know the title is always in index four. So it is, it depends on how we're accessing the data. In this situation, we wanna get all of the books. And so the books are stored in an, in a list, so we access it with either a for loop or the individual index. But inside of that, we've got a group of information that we wanna access using the keys, book dot title, book dot author, book dot Amazon product, you are out, whatever. So because of that, we make it an object. So that's part of this, is can you identify the difference between an array and then, and an object? So that's part of this, is can you identify the difference between an array and then and an object? Because that's what we need to do to be able to dive deep down into this data.
Mm-hmm.
So now that we're here, we're getting out. What did we, what data type did we say this is? This whole big one up here?
It's a. You just said it and I can't. It's an array of.
What's the difference between an array and an object?
An object has key value pairs.
Yes, does this have key value pairs?
Yes.
So what is this?
An object.
Yes. So because it is an object, what notation are we going to use to access the data inside of it?
Notation.
Dot notation. So over in our dot notation, we can now say something like dot author and oh, no. If I can type after driving for six hours in the rain, now we get the author.
Yes.
My parents-in-law also drove like six hours in the rain, did you, were you all together?
I just drove up from South Jersey and. The entire drive down, it rained, and now the entire drive back up a week later, it also rained, and it was like.
One times.
Okay, I'm gonna let Palash take it over here with you Natasha to finish it off. Does anyone else need help desperately? Cuz I can go on a breakout room. Okay, I'm gonna catch up on some of your Slack messages. Keep it up, tomorrow, we are gonna do our um, capstone check-in. And then we're gonna do a review of API, so everything Ryan taught you, we're gonna do a review on promises. I'm gonna do a review on await async, which is the preferred way that I write my code. And we're gonna get practiced with Owen Wilson, so we're gonna use a very random um, API that returns every time. Owen Wilson says wow in a movie, um, we're gonna use that to make that data show up on a screen. Um, and then we're gonna dive into React starting tomorrow. And we're actually gonna rebuild our Owen Wilson project that we do in vanilla JavaScript into React. So we can start to see kinda the similarities of of what overlaps there. If anyone needs me, ping me, I am probably gonna be around later tonight. Um, so if anyone needs help, uh, don't hesitate to ping me on Slack and I will catch up on Slack messages, I know I owe some of you guys responses.
Thank you.
I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Oh, hey Shay. Okay.
I still some information, but you know.
No, you missed all the good stuff.
I did, I checked like, I'm I'm so bad at keeping up with Slack and Canvas, I forget they exist. So I typed it in, I'm like, oh, they in there, cuz I was just on with Doug. We were supposed to be on for since three thirty, we didn't stop until six.
Wow.
Same, yeah, I stole him for two hours too, it it was a big help.
Yeah, seriously, like I did, like this, this is the only thing I got stuck on and I'm like, okay, I need, I need some.
It's the JavaScript for me.
Yeah, yeah, I was, and that's, I think that's where I hit my wall, when we started JavaScript and then we kept going into like everything in the JavaScript, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, he he didn't give us time to kinda marinate in it, it's just forward march.
I think it's mostly repetition, but like HTML, we did the same thing, we knew to start our titles, header, the HTML document. Like we did it like every class, so it was easy for us to pick up, we're in JavaScript, they're like, each day was something new we learned. So we didn't get chance to constantly do the same things over and over. I think that's what. Really uh, hindered me, but um, I already got this, I'm just stuck on trying to get. The book images and books to show up now, which I was helping Doug, or Doug was helping me figure out.
I'm gonna stop this, y'all go on ahead and uh, jump in with Mr. Shay here. Cuz I took up so much of y'all time, I'm still gonna hang around, but I want somebody else to get a chance to get some help, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Natasha, you're pretty much done though, does you go, I'll just. Put it in the HTML of the document and you'll be all set.
Literally, I'm I'm in the same book, I just gotta put in the HTML, which I did, but. For some reason, it's only showing up the words of the last book in the category, and it's annoying.
Hmm, let's see what you got, and Natasha, maybe you can follow along while we figure Shay's out.
CRB, I need a refill.
Yeah, keep hydrated, girl. You're on that beach getting.
Alright, y'all can see that? Alright, so. Every time I pick it, oh.
Oh, you're going in.
Yeah, I'll, hold on.
Add a dropdown, I feel like I need to add a dropdown.
I just wanted, cuz I was looking at Ryan and he built a diff for each category and. I was, that's my last resort, if I don't get this.
Yeah, I didn't wanna hurt myself.
Hold on, let me uncomment on this, so I could show you what I mean. Alright, since that's done. So now, whenever I pick a genre. Title, description, author, but there's no image, and the worst part is oh, it's always the last book of that category.
So that's your.
I think the last one could be like, because you have that break in there, do you wanna like get rid of that in the console, um, comment it out and try it again? Are you using like a switch statement on there?
Um, I wasn't.
Uh, okay. Um, let's see. So on your line twenty-six, what you're doing is like, um, you are going into a category and you're finding if the. Selected um, option from the dropdown is equal to the. Name of the list, and if it's true, you are logging those out, right?
Yeah, so that's where, that's where all of these is coming in that. So when you average, you select the category, it's gonna console log out the books to order titles.
Gotcha. Gotcha, um, can you like make it a little, blow blow it up a little?
Yeah, I'm, I got you right now.
If you hold like command plus, I think it kinda like zooms in a little bit. Yes, perfect. Um, alright, so you have genre selection is your. Select element, and then you're on that change, you are console logging selected target. Genre of book list, genre. Genre. For. Genre dot books, console log it out. Book title. Alright, so let's fix the image part quickly. Um, so here you have book dot book image, was it like book dot book image slash URL? I just wanna make sure we're naming it right, if you go to like. In your, i- in your browser's console.
Hmm.
Book dot book slash image as well, or underscore image as well.
But I did add the image URL in there too.
Right, so if you can like open that, the.
Oh, there you go.
Yes.
You know what I was missing? I was missing the, that's the apostrophe right there. I literally was just telling Doug, whenever I get a typo or error, it's always one typo, either a letter or something, or always. This literally just proves it. Okay, and I mean. Okay, that's odd, uh. Book name for sure. So now, since I got that coming up, is only just console logged in the last book of those categories.
Okay, let's give it a try, and yeah, let's open your VS code. Um. So your con, on your line thirty-two, your console login book title, and it's giving you all of it, uh, uh. Giving you um, all the book titles in that, so that's good, I think. Um, with, do you wanna try like on your line thirty-fourth? Like, after the e- before the equal sign, you wanna add a plus, so what? It's gonna do is like, it's gonna go over every single book and like feed it into the. Um, my HTML for every single one of them, right now, it's going over all of them. But it's like ended up only on the last element. So let's see if that works. Oh.
No, no, saying it's undefined, and this, again, it's only possible log in that last book.
My HTML is not defined, alright, let's go back to your code, um. Okay, so I think the only thing that might be missing is on your line thirty, so before the for loop starts. I think we just gotta declare this my HTML, like what it is, so.
Constant HTML.
Right, so like. Yeah, like here, like let my HTM, yeah, const my HTML. Equals an empty string. Yeah, and let's give it a try. Uh, oh, it's a constant variable, so you you gotta change the const.
Forgot about that.
Yeah, I I got stuck on that point a lot too, uh, then I realized all, either you gotta like do a dot mapping or for each and kinda like. Put it in the variable over and over, or you do that plus equal sign, so it goes over uh, each object and puts this div in. I- in the, in the, in my HTML for like every single um, object of books.
Cuz I was talking to Rain and she told me about the dot map, which I also tried it. But I wasn't, I was still stuck on the HTML part, so I was like, and then I ended up messing the code up, so I'm like, you know what, let me just change it. Everything messed up, I erased it, had Doug up for one-on-one, I said, help me please. Uh, yes, that, that's, that's basically what I wanted this, now all I gotta do is just stylize it.
Beautiful. That's.
Yes, sir. That's all I wanted.
Always like that one little part. First of all, I didn't even know I was supposed to have a by now part, so. I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, everyone's, everyone's doing it differently, like Kenny was doing a dot create element thing, which is like, we haven't been taught yet, but he's. Trying it out, I I tried it, like Ryan tried it, Ryan told me to, but it didn't work for me.
Yeah, I tried to uh, create element, I liked that a lot, I'm glad you mentioned that, I might actually use that on my capstone.
Mm-hmm. Hmm, I tried. Cuz Ryan said it's like, it it's like, makes your code more bug-free, kinda like every. Um, like every time someone changes the API. Um, it does not um, change your web page, something like that.
Right, so I definitely, all I gotta do now, I guess, is just stylize it, I'm done. Oh, man, I was stuck on this one part for two days, man.
Wow.
Speaking of um, capstone, does anybody know like what exactly is required of tomorrow?
You just reminded me to ask Max that. I meant to ask him, what is, what is the minimum, is he gonna be looking for as far?
Yeah, I definitely wanna know what the minimum is too.
There's a list somewhere that says where we can be by week.
I just looked through the assignments and like there is a week one capstone that tells us how far we were supposed to be, like with the. Um, wireframe and stuff, but the week two, I. I mean, like he gave me an API for it, so I'm not sure if he expects us to know. If we're supposed to be putting an API in it right now, or.
Yeah, I think I I have that document, let me share that, I think all he needs for tomorrow is like, just the HTML and CSS, kinda like pages linked together. If you wanna, want someone to sign in, kinda like, sort of like the basic prototype of it, so yeah, let me share that um, doc. It's from Ken, was it here?
Where was it on Canvas?
I think it was, was it under modules?
Mm-hmm, modules.
Cuz this whole week, I was, I was watching these videos, the modules, I was setting all the previous codes up. I don't think, I got.
If you go to like capstone requirements and it. Gives you a link to open capstone requirements in a new window. And somewhere on there, you'll see like where should I be on my project and then hit on like week ten.
Yep.
Wait, repeat that again?
If you, if you click on that open C5.
Under module.
Mm-hmm.
Module and then capstone requirements, and then it'll pop up a new window, and on the left, it should give you like a whole list of like. Where you should be in your project, what should my tech stack be?
Um, it's not showing, okay, do you wanna go back to the the, do you wanna go back to um, Canvas?
Um, I'm still sharing my screen, oh.
Yeah. End of JS, create HTML CSS files.
Yeah, and if you go to a. Hmm, home, I think. Yeah, and go to capstone requirements, like the second, yeah, that one, and open that. So here, where it says like week ten, end of JS, where should I be in my project there, if you click on that. And click the link, there you go, that shows like. You have your HTML CSS ready, link the pages together. If you have any forms.
Oh.
So it's not like, yeah, you don't need like a final product in any way.
This is like so hard, because all of. My whole capstone project is all backend. Like, is, nothing is gonna be done upfront, it's not gonna be very user-friendly, it's not like. And if it is gonna be anything the users can do anything with, it's, I can't do anything until I have. All of this stuff linked to it, and like, I don't even know if I can get this stuff until the end of the project.
Funny, mine is mostly front, and I'll just try to add a little JavaScript in there, just to be like, yeah, I was learning, I wasn't. Let me see if I can show my capstone, sure, I wish I got to now. I remember, and the funny thing is, um, on one of the videos I was looking at, from when we first showed our capstone, I already had. I had nothing, I literally had tabs, and I only started to capstone this week.
Hmm.
Really?
Oh, yes, I was like, hmm, how much?
Well, I shouldn't say that, I haven't touched it since this whole week has been working on this New York Times project.
Literally, I spent half of the week just doing that, and two days trying to get it to show up in HTML, very productive, but.
I'm sorry, I spent four hours of, four hours just looking at it, not even writing one line of code.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, I, yeah, I cried many times in that four hours.
That was me yesterday.
I mean, I typed it, and I deleted it, and I typed it, and it didn't work, so I deleted it, and yeah, I was.
Yeah, that's basically.
Right, and you tell me not to delete my stuff.
I know, which, I, but it was literal, it was literally only one line of code, so deleting it was. It didn't work anyway, so.
When I hit a brick wall, I go play with colors.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you see, it's great.
Yep.
Yeah, that's basically all I got, I was just like, between when I first showed it and now, completely different.
So Shay, are you using that two local storage thing with your login credentials?
Okay, I'll just, just to play around with it, just to show like, I I was just messing around like with the JavaScript and stuff. Um, but most of the stuff, I literally just wanted to show like, I, what I, what we've been learning in class, I just wanted to pit for the check-in now. And then refine everything as we go through the, through the weeks, what I really was working on is the.
You wasted a good ten, fifteen seconds.
I just saw that.
So what is your project?
Uh, I'm gonna base it on home remedies, so basically, any, anything that's considered a home remedy. Like, cuz my family, we were very big on home remedies, um, when. Cuz I'm, I have allergies, and whenever I used to get stung by bees, I was. Take, cuz she didn't, she used to smoke cigarettes, she don't anymore, but she would take tobacco from a cigarette. Wet it and apply it on the area, so it would reduce the swan, and I wouldn't have to worry about my allergy so much. And my favorite one is when you have a sore throat, strep throat, guard in warm water.
Yep.
So, I I feel like stuff like that is probably more useful than a lot of the things I learned at school, honestly, so. Put that out there for people, um, that's basically what this is, just a home remedy, so if you. Say, for instance, somebody that don't have as many funds, but they still wanna, you know, do something. This page is basically for anything for like sickness, maybe some um, home care products, concoctions, like. For recently, there's been a lot of gnats and flying bugs around, so I made a concoction with uh, warm water. Uh, a drop of dish soaps, um sugar and apple cider vinegar and it traps them. Like the bugs get towards the the concoction and they go in the water and it basically they get stuck cuz of the dish soap and it traps all the bugs on it.
Oh, that's awesome.
Probably useful for like summertime where you got all these flying insects, you could just come on the page and then took up something for insects, boom, and it'd show up. But I was working on.
Like articles or like blogs?
Yeah, like articles and blogs, where you can also um post your own little home remedy for other people to see.
Yes. In different categories and stuff, that would be awesome. I heard of uh putting um. An onion in honey. And letting it sit. Do you guys know about that? Like, no. That's so awesome for.
Got liquidy. You had to drink the liquid.
Yeah, like a tablespoon every day and it's supposed to keep you healthy. It's supposed to be like an antibiotic.
Yep.
Now you could pull that over here and then people.
Right up there with the onions and your socks.
Also, like if you leave a tea bag in your um slippers overnight, it takes the smell off, not only but a little bit.
But I was really working on recently with this was the mouse over stuff, which is why I got this button here. Cuz in my wireframe, I have it where it's showing exactly how the pages with the squares and everything and on the s- there's side panels. I didn't put it, I didn't tell Max. Also, obviously, when you click over, this pops up. So on this side, it's just. If the uh whoever made the post, they could put like their own little thoughts into it, like this is what I use for, this is how it helps me. And then on the right, I will probably have something like similar or like links to like other posts in that category. But that's that's basically it. Just, you know, something small, simple, and then I got the error messages here coming on page.
If you had like a like an affiliate kind of a thing though, and you could use the right side for linking the project. The products that you're talking about.
Exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking about doing. So this would be just whatever the poster or. The creator of the site was we need cuz I will, I would like to leave my thoughts on them too, like just little side comments and then the right would just be. Like you said, affiliates, links, just more information.
Good stuff.
Does anybody wanna help me with uh? My capstone, I kind of.
I mean, we're all here, mine as well.
Yeah, um, so it's just a little, I had a login button and then I was like, oh, I like this login button better and it's an ID action links. And I put it in there and it works on a different page, but it does not work on my. Capstone page. So I have no idea. I'm gonna share.
Oh, yeah, let me start sharing my story and I'm I'm glad you caught the um plus, I don't know if anybody else caught it, but. I needed a placeholder name and I'm like home remedies and I'm like, oh, well, H ref, alright, but then let me.
That was a good one.
Um, a home remedy for acne is tea tree.
Yes, it's really the best.
Oh, I wish I didn't know that in my engagement.
Right?
The best tea tree I think is from Walmart Salon. It's like. Something, something Michael's tea tree. Like, I don't know, I I shared that tip with some girlfriends at college and they were like, oh my god.
Walmart has some secret stuff that really works too.
Yeah. That one's strong.
Yeah, this is my ha ha ha. I literally have like two sentences of uh. Code for this. Um, I so I tried putting in. I had like a whole button. I can't even remember where I got it. It was a really cool login button and I should have left it, but I was taking snippets of my code from other places. And I was like, okay, for this JavaScript, I wanted this login to work, so I put the action links login. Button that went with this JavaScript and now I can't even get. The action, maybe it's because I didn't reference my. Login J, oh no.
So it was not working, you used to have a button where it's where it says div ID action links and now it's not?
No, like I had a whole, I went and I don't know where I found it, but I found like a whole pre-made button. For a login and it was great and I just threw it in there. It was like three lines of code if that. And then I wanted to use this login from a past project we did because it was already pre-made. I'm like, why not be lazy and copy paste? And then I also took the div ID action links from it because that what was, that's what was making the login button on the other page. But it's not working on this page. And I'm thinking maybe cuz I didn't. Link my login.
Is that button on the other page, like the login dot HTML page?
Yeah, it's it's on the other page and I didn't even like, I even commented it out and the login button left. It was the blog page.
Okay.
I get all my buttons from Bootstrap.
That's what I was doing. I think that's probably.
But and do you have to put in like in between, if you could scroll down a little bit, kinda like what we did. With the Amazon link for mine, put some some kind of.
You are absolutely.
Thing there.
Fingers crossed, maybe. I hope so.
Ah, it's at the bottom. Is it clickable?
Ah, no, it's not clickable, but it's there.
Dang it.
I mean, you can go on Bootstrap right now and copy like a primary button for now.
But will that work with this? JS with this JavaScript down here? Or maybe it's not working because I didn't.
Instead of a div, could you put a or in the div, put a button?
Yeah, like replace the word div with a button. It's gonna give you a regular button.
Yes.
So it's good, I I I don't think like you um like. We are doing anything with the button in the J JavaScript right now.
That's what I was gonna say. Can she put in like an on click event to kinda?
Log in event didn't, wouldn't work.
But now that you've added the. Add now that you've added um the button tag, can't you target the button in JavaScript? Can we target? The HTML button in JavaScript to make it clickable?
Yes, uh, so what we can do is like, do you do you remember that on click thing? Does anyone?
Yeah, the on click on the uh that you put in the HTML.
Right, yeah. Like um in your button element on line thirty second, like add that on click after the button. Yep, the word button.
Is it like an ID or a class?
Um, no, just I think it's the word on click and then equals and within the. Um, yeah, that's when that starts, you're gonna run the login um. Uh, function from your JavaScript. So if you hit login, click login, I'm sorry, type in login.
Or should it just be, oh, yep.
Yeah, all small caps, yep, the function. And probably those um parentheses too.
I'm sorry, parentheses.
Like right after the where you added the word login. Yeah, right, yeah, like to an empty parentheses, open and close.
No, am I, I'm not.
No, okay, inside the codes, um after the word login, inside him.
Yes, oh, okay.
Yep, yeah, just that and let's give it a try.
No, it's not.
Um, no, okay.
Tag it as an event, like in the JavaScript, she doesn't have to tag it. Like instead of doing it in the HT, well, in addition to doing it in the HTML, putting it in the JavaScript as an on click. Event and targeting that button.
That add event listener thing, um, I do it that way, um, we can give it a try. Okay. So first things first, the um objective is this login button on this page is to like take you to the login page or?
Yeah.
Okay, so to take it, to take um for the button to take you to the login page. How about we delete all this on click login and just add an A tag that takes you to the login dot HTML? Yeah, so get rid of all that. And where it says login, wrap it around an A tag. And H ref it to the. In login dot HTML. How's it going, buddy? Yeah. In your A tag, yep. Oh, you gotta give it an H ref. And the name of your page, which would be login dot HTML.
I was wondering where I did that. I'm like, why am I not linking?
Oh, HTML, not JS.
Oh, no, I named this J at, oh. Why? Oh, cuz that, I.
Right. Gotcha. So if you go back to your browser, it should be working now. I think it's the tab left to it. Yeah, there you go.
You're awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, anytime. So for this page, if you. For the login dot HTML page, if you go into your code and yeah, that tab. Now you can add, um, where's the button? Yeah, you do have it. You have form on submit login event. So now you can give it a try.
I don't think I have it going anywhere after this, though.
Okay.
Yeah, it just brings me right back to the login page, which is fine. Cuz I haven't, I didn't get any further than that to do anything in it afterwards, so.
Yeah.
In part two, that's perfect. He just wants uh JavaScript all done.
Yeah, I was just like literally stealing bits and pieces from other code to, yeah.
That's what we do.
Yeah, cuz I'm not. Can't write all this out, why? So great and I'm like, yeah, I know what's going on here and I know how what you're doing and why you're doing it and then you go to write it yourself and you're like, uh.
So what I do when I get stuck is like a console log, like every single thing out, like. Helps me a little bit, keep track of what's going where.
And console log works for everything, even like. HTML pages and stuff like that, right?
Yes, uh.
It's not like it matters, you could just.
Yeah.
Inspect this and see what's in your HTML.
True. And for arrays and stuff, if you call instead of console dot log, you do console dot table. And put an array in it, it can like draw the table in your console just for you to see, so.
Down, I didn't even know that. So it's console dot table and then what we wanna table up the everyone's.
Yeah, like if you if you come up like like can think of any array or any o- object, like. If you were pulling like that data dot results dot list instead of console logging it out, if you put console dot table. It should give you a table in your console, not on your page.
Okay.
Awesome.
That sounds crazy.
Yeah, I I I found it today, yeah.
Sharing all the good secrets.
Yeah, right.
I mean, anytime, if you feel free to just slack me or anything if you guys get stuck.
Yeah, for real.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I'm at the.
Alright, peeps, I'm about to hop off. I need to go eat.
Yeah, same. Are you guys good? Does anyone need anything? I mean, not like I was much help, but.
Y'all already helped me with my issues, so I'm.
You're the moderator, you you brought everyone together.
It made me happy. I was like, yeah, we conned Max into a whole nother class. Alright, you guys have a good night. Thank you for all coming in.